Keep the family and your thoughts. Let's have a moment of silence now in honor of Caleb. All right, thank you. And we're down to board members.
I'm done.
All right.
To improve our effectiveness, the Hardin County Board of Education commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district, and support district goals and support board decisions.
Recognitions and John Wright will take care of some of those for us?
Yes, sir. We have a couple of resolutions for you, Mr. Chairman, so if you'll take care of those, we'll proceed.
Need a motion?
I make a motion to approve the resolutions as presented.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the recognitions. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay. First of all, we have some student recognitions and they are from John Hardin High School. So if you ladies will come on up here, I know there's a couple of you. And Ms. Millian, if you'd like to come as well. These are students from the John Hardin Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Chapter, otherwise known as FCCLA. And they competed in the National Leadership Conference this summer in Atlanta and did very, very well. Raina Shelby, who is a senior, earned gold for the chapter in review display. Madison Smith, a senior, earned gold for the chapter, also in review display, chapter in review display. And then Katie King, who graduated in 2018, but was a senior last year. So she earned the right to compete. And she was a senior last year and earned the, earned gold in the job interview category. So very, very proud of these young ladies. And Ms. Millian, she's their sponsor, and the John Hardin Bulldogs continue to excel. So we're very, very proud of you guys. Please give them a round of applause. Next, we have again some special folks to recognize. And you know, last year, we did the Leading the Way Award. That was our hashtag last year was HCS Leading the Way. And each month, we presented you with a resolution that, you know, brought forth people that really exemplified that, that saying, "Leading the Way." Well, this year, our hashtag is HCS Stronger Together. And so really emphasizing the, the force of working together, of strength and numbers. And, and so that, that is, that is what we are focusing on for this school year is HCS Stronger Together. So you'll see that a lot in our social media posts and so forth. And especially each month with our, with our HCS Stronger Together awards. So our first recipient as a student, the student award goes to Ms. Anna Noble. Come on up, Ms. Anna. And Anna will tell you what she's holding here in just a second. But Anna is a fourth grader at New Highland Elementary School. She will receive later on this year the Yes, I Can Award from the Kentucky Council for Exceptional Children. She'll do that in November. She was adopted when she was six years old by her mother Cynthia Noble, who has adopted a total of six children. All of them have physical challenges. However, that has not hampered their success and growth in and out of the classroom. After her arrival, Anna underwent several surgeries, enrolled in school, and began to learn English. Despite all of her adversity, Anna has a positive attitude, as you can tell by that beautiful smile. She is always happy and her teachers have never met a child more determined to succeed. Anna has written a book called My Life, which she has there in her hand. And it is very special. I've read it. It's a very wonderful book. She tells her obstacles in it and her victories in the book. It has caught the attention of the Yes, I Can Award organizers, and they will present her with the Yes, I Can Award in the fall. We are so proud of you, Ms. Anna. Wonderful job. Now next, the staff award winner for HCS Stronger Together is her teacher, Ms. Veronica Keeler. Come on up here, Ms. Keeler. Ms. Keeler is a special education teacher at New Highland, and she has guided Anna along the way and has never told Anna that anything was impossible. She is dedicated not only to Anna's success, but the success of all her students. Her enthusiasm is contagious and in helping Anna's dreams become a reality. We appreciate you, Ms. Keeler. Okay, next, we'd like to bring up a group of community folks for our HCS Stronger Together Community Awards. And as you all know, every year, Bluegrass Cellular has sponsored a school supply drive called Don't Miss the Bus. And we've done this now for several, several years, and it just continues to grow. And this year and last was probably one of the biggest ever Don't Miss the Bus School Supply Drives. And so we'd like to honor Bluegrass Cellular and two other partners that have made that extremely successful, especially this year. So we'll bring up Bluegrass Cellular first, Mackenzie Ferriss and Dana Sherard from Bluegrass Cellular. And they also have a little something special for us. So we're going to give them their award first, and then we'll let them share their, their gift with us. But once championed, Bluegrass Cellular has once again championed the Don't Miss the Bus School Supply Drive. The marketing and promotions team of Bluegrass Cellular organized the event by seeking businesses and organizations to act as supply drop-off locations. They also promote the drive through their strategic marketing campaigns. They count the items. This year, they organized all the items. So Family Resource Center and Youth Service Center coordinators from our district, Elizabeth Town Independent Schools and Fort Knox Schools could easily pick up supplies for their students. No less than 20 Bluegrass Cellular employees were part of Don't Miss the Bus. And it was a beautiful day to see their employees out there jumping on our buses and loading things. And, and it, it was, it was really special. As you can tell, not only did they raise school supplies or ask for school supplies, they received several donations as well, and they're passing those along to us in the form of $986. So we are grateful. Thank you, thank you, Bluegrass Cellular. So stay up there. Everyone bring your other partners up here as well. So WQXC Jennifer Myers is here from WQXC Quixy. They, they are the media partner behind Don't Miss the Bus. And they drive the promotion through the radio, drive the bus, pardon the pun, through its radio programming and its social media channels. Quixy, the Quixy team is also active in planning the event and urging its listeners to buy extra school supplies for families who may not be able to absorb the financial burden. So thank you, Quixy. If you'd like to bring up Dustin Shepard. Come on up, Dustin. Dustin is from Goss Hall Systems. And this year, we, we realized that we had so many supplies last school year, it was hard to get them on the bus. I mean, we, we had two buses driving them around and, and we were killing ourselves getting those supplies on the bus. So Goss Hall Systems, they're a logistics and transportation company. They donated two large cargo vans on Don't Miss the Bus Pickup Day. The vans housed large barrels of supplies and made multiple trips to our drop-off site, which was at College View Campus. Goss Hall also supplied personnel to drive the vans. Dustin was there with us that day and to assist in carrying the supplies. So we couldn't have done it without you. There's lots of heavy kids. They're all on the same playing field now because of your, your hard work. So we appreciate all of you. Thank you very much. Chairman, my work is done. Thank you very much.
Focus on academics.
Over the next two months, we want to kind of showcase some of our students who have been involved in our Governor's Scholar Program. In our Governor's Scholar Program this past summer, we had 23 Hardin County students that participated, went through a rigorous application, rigorous selection process. We're going to recognize three of those students tonight. One from John, John Hardin, one from North, and one from Central. But also next month, we also have Governor's Scholar School for the Arts. And we also have Governor's Scholar School for Entrepreneurship. We have students that have been selected for that as well. So I'm looking forward to hearing them next month. But tonight, with us from North Hardin High School, we have Jordan Murra. We have from John Hardin High School, Lucy Sensala. And from Central Hardin High School, we have Jacob Sherard. And just going to hear from them for a few, few minutes about their experience with Governor's Scholar over their five weeks this summer. We'll start with Lucy right up here up front, John Hardin High School.
I'm Lucy Sensala. I'm from, hi. I'm from John Hardin High School. And this past summer, I spent five weeks at Northern Kentucky University for the Governor's Scholars Program. When I first got here, last year was my first year here in Kentucky. One of the first things I heard about for applying for all these scholarships and activities and new clubs was Governor's Scholars Program. And my guidance counselors, my teachers, everybody was like, you have to do this program. And so of course, I did it and I filled out the application. And it was a lot of work, but it went through. It got submitted and I got accepted. And every single word that everybody said about how good it was, every single minute of work I put into this application ended up being worth it. Because these five weeks at the program, we spent going on field trips. We spent learning in a new environment that I'd never experienced before, one that we got to choose. We got to lead ourselves in this educational program with a little bit of direction from our teachers. But mostly, it was an experience where we learned how to be on our own and where we learned how to learn on our own. And we learned what value and education that you actively pursue can have. The Governor's Scholar Program is really helping me find my direction towards my future because I believe it's really going to help in admissions processes for the schools I'm applying to. Because I have a couple of big goals for where I want to go. I'm applying to UK here, and the Governor's Scholar Program is definitely going to help me with scholarships for going to UK. It's helped me put, it's helped put me on the radar of schools like, like Tulane in New Orleans, who's now offering me priority admissions. And the big dream school that I'm looking at is Harvard. And without something big like the Governor's Scholars Program to put on my resume, I don't think I'd have as much of a chance at schools like that. So I think it's been a very valuable experience, and I've appreciated the whole summer.
What do you want to major in?
Chemical engineering with a minor in marketing.
Wow, all right. Thank you.
Next up, we've got Jordan Murra from North Hardin High School.
Hello, I'm Jordan, and I go to North Hardin. I'm Jordan Murra, and I go to North Hardin. And this summer, I was accepted into the Governor's Scholars Program. And at first, I was accepted as an alternate, and my dreams were kind of crushed. But then, a couple of weeks later, they sent me a letter back and said I was accepted in. And it felt like all the hard work I put into the application, because I had been worried about the application since August, when school started of last year. Like I was trying to get a head start on it, and it all started to pay off. And then this summer, I was in the healthcare industry because I want to be a dentist. When I get out of high school, and I planned a major in biology. And my healthcare field really helped me gear towards more stuff, looking at outlooks other than dentistry. Like we did a cadaver lab, and we looked at dead bodies. And we also seen a lot of administration part of healthcare. We got to visit Passport in Louisville, and we almost went to Humana, but we didn't. And we visited hospitals in the greater Cincinnati area. And it just opened me to broader subjects that I didn't think about before. And it made me expand more. And I think that a lot of children in our community can benefit from trying to apply to this because it really is life-changing. And this made me want to do more for my community in Kentucky. And this made me want to stay in school in Kentucky, whereas first, I wanted to go out of state. But being at GSP made me realize that I can start here first and then branch out.
And last but not least, when I mentioned this guy's name, I said Jacob Sherard. And she said, I think we did some dancing together when we were down at NKU. Is that right, Lucy? I mean, embarrassed to say this. Come on up, Jacob. I guess you had some pun too, didn't you?
Hello, I'm Jacob Sherard. I go to Central Hardin High School. I was also accepted into the Northern Kentucky campus for GSP this year. And some of the things that I learned at GSP are actually kind of hard for me to put into words. It really was just the best summer of my life, one of the best experiences that I think I'll ever have the pleasure of partaking in. When I was there, just being around people with similar interests and a similar drive to, for success just really, I think, pushed me as a person to achieve even greater things and push my aspirations even higher. And as they have said, GSP created this sense of community that I wish we could see in our schools. And I hope that I can advocate for certain, you know, changes and things like that, to see this strong sense of community in our schools. Because it was really cool to see how everybody bonded quickly and just was able to overcome certain obstacles as a community. And I just hope that I can see that again sometime in my lifetime. Even though while I was at GSP, I was loving it there. I was enjoying being away from home. One thing that kind of came as a byproduct of that was the urge to come back here and just make a change in my community, just change the things I don't like, and just push for an overall greater place to live. After high school, I hope to be a McConnell Scholar at the University of Louisville. I want to major in political science and hopefully do a major in Spanish as well. And so have, thank you.
I think something that they said was critical about the, the scholarship opportunities, not just here in our state, but in other states as well. You're looking at, being a governor scholar with a certain ACT score, used to get you 100%. Not the case anymore, but a lot of times, they can get you up to 75%, you know, guaranteed when you get in this program. So they talked about the process starting in August. They go through this process the whole year long. And it has to be dot every i and cross every t. And we have students some that don't qualify, but we have a lot that do. And know that we have 23 kids in our district, shows we have some of the best and brightest right here. And our teachers are impacting and making a difference. And it's good to hear from them. And next month, I'll bring some people about from the School for the Arts and the School for Entrepreneurship. So we're branching out with our kids, looking in different, different pathways. So thank y'all for letting me share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to make a comment. I was fortunate enough to be the board member who read all the applications for the Hardin County students. I think there were 46. And you notice they talked a lot about that application. Because some of my read were 50 pages long. I mean, it's a, it's a rigorous process. And every one of you should have that opportunity to do that because it really gives you a sense of the quality of students we have in this district.
That's great.
But it's, it's a bummer.
As you would normally say, thank those parents for keeping them motivated.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
We appreciate it.
Because that's a real challenge. I'm sure there's a lot of kids that don't apply just because of what the application requires.
Sometimes.
Yes.
The hard work scares them off, but hang in there, it'll pay off in the long run. Thank y'all. Do we have any visitors sign up? Regina Boone would like to address the board.
My name is Regina Boone. I'm a kindergarten teacher at UC Burkinell Elementary School. I also serve as Hardin County Education Association President. These are members of HCEA, so I'll let them introduce themselves.
Cindy Murray, College View Campus.
Vera Murray, North Hardin High School.
Nick Newton, Runegill School. And I'm also the HCEA Vice President.
The new president, Mary Lou, retired in June, so Nick is our new president. So we're here to make a presentation on behalf of the Backpack Program. Last year, I think it was either December or January, I tried to figure out which meeting it was. But the superintendent made a plea to the public that there are 87 children on the Backpack Program currently waiting to receive lunches or meals on Friday afternoons. And sitting back there, I sent a message out to my executive committee and said, hey, look, you know, we have money. Students in Hardin County need food. We know that early childhood literacy is important, but children can't learn if their basic needs are not met, and food is one of those. So every single day, I see kids come to my kindergarten classroom, and they'll tell me, I had one this morning at 9:30, came to school and said, he said, Ms. Boone, are we having lunch? I said, it's not time. He said, well, I hadn't had anything to eat. So he wanted breakfast before we went to lunch. So I sent our assistant to go and get him breakfast, then we'll get lunch. But we know that children can't learn if they're hungry. So I made a pledge then as HCEA President that we would always donate to the Backpack Program. That would be one of our line item budget as long as I'm here as president. So last year, the pledge was $250 to the Backpack Program. We looked at where we were in the budget cycle, and we were able to donate $500 last year. This year, and hopefully, we can donate more next year. We pledge to, here's our check for $600 to the Backpack Program and for the students of Hardin County. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Where we at? Construction updates.
But, but I was a Governor's School Scholar in Virginia. So, so I've, I've at least paralleled some of your great students tonight. Just wanted to bring you up to date on some months' worth of progress since the last board meeting. You'll recall at the last board meeting, we asked for the official board approval on the schematic documents on both the new Lincoln Trail Elementary and the new East Hardin Middle School. The board was gracious enough to approve those documents at that meeting. Since then, we've, of course, taken those. We've transmitted them to KDE for their review and approval. I can't report to you tonight that, that we have the approval. They, they seem to be snowed under these days with a lot of things to review. But I have talked to your staff member that represents you at KD's office. They are working on it. In the meantime, the work continues so that, so to speak. We've had several meetings on Lincoln Trail in particular. We actually have a series of meetings planned for East Hardin tomorrow. But things that have been occurring, one of the more complicated areas of both buildings will be the kitchen, just by its very nature. And so we've had our sort of our kickoff kitchen design meeting for both buildings. Came in with lots of different options, different designs of kitchens, and actually probably threw out a few of those designs even at that meeting. So we're making good progress on that work. More importantly, for Lincoln Trail in particular, we sort of went through a room-by-room sit-down meeting with each of the, sort of the staff members that is focused on each of those particular spaces. So things like preschool, art, music, even the, the, the regular instructional classrooms that are in the building. So that we can sit down with staff members, understand what their needs are, fine-tune those spaces, and get it as, as right as rain as we can. And that's really the meetings that we're going to be having with East tomorrow. We've also engaged our subconsultants. Obviously, we have to have a structural engineer to design the structure. We, we've started to push them forward to do their work. The mechanical and electrical designs have started, and the site work continues as well. We've also been communicating with your construction manager, Alliance. We've transmitted sort of all of our documents and even beyond the schematic so that they can start putting all of their pre-construction services together. The most important, probably, the estimate out of those. And we actually have our first coordination meeting with them scheduled, I believe, for the 27th of this month. So we're making good progress there. And so more importantly, that is to say, we are, we are moving at a pretty good speed at this point. My anticipation is to actually be here next month with sort of the next phase of documents, which KD we call Design Development. So it's sort of a, a middle phase. But if all things go according to plan, we'll be able to present those to you at that board meeting and ask for your approval for those. Again, those have to be transmitted to KD. And it, it kind of keeps us marching forward for eventually wrapping up the documents and being able to bid the job and start our construction. So both, my, my summary of that is both projects are in great shape currently. In addition to those two new buildings, we do have a project on your consent agenda tonight. It's the new North Hardin High School Indoor Batting Building. There's a number of documents I think John has provided for you. But that is to say, the documents are complete. Brought a little producer set with me tonight, if anybody wants to look at those. Again, pending your approval tonight, we'll wrap that all up, send it to KD for their approval, receive their authorization to bid, bid the project quickly, and hopefully start construction on it shortly thereafter. Are there any questions from the board tonight?
When will you start moving dirt for the school sites?
For the school sites?
Do you know yet?
Prob, my guess is it will be probably the first of the year would be my guess. Some of that will be weather dependent. So by the time we go through a bid cycle, it'll take at least a month to bid the project. So if we wrap up November, December, we'll probably take bids January-ish, make a recommendation to approve in February. And by the time they mobilize and stick a dozer on the site, it may be late February, early March, which is actually good timing, generally speaking. The weather is, tends to be a little less cold and hopefully we'll have a dry spring.
Have we already done all the testing, soul testing, all that stuff?
We've done the Phase One initial geotech. That was part of your, your site selection process. KD dictates that we do that. We, we will be doing a Phase Two geotechnical, which actually takes bores where the building is located so that we're very precise on what the subsurface conditions are under the building. We've actually already taken proposals for those. But the recommendation right now is to, to wait till we fully close on the property and own the properties before we, we put drill rigs out on the site. So, so we're ready to do that just as soon as everything in that process.
Actuous to get these schools.
We, we all are, we all are, understand. But I think we're, I think we're moving, I think we caught Alliance a little bit off guard with how much we had actually done in the last month. So they're, they're kind of catching up to us now. And I think they're pleased with the progress that we've made. It should make for a good, good first estimate.
Now, will the Alliance folks come to the board meetings too? Or will you ever see those folks?
You absolutely will see those. I can't really speak for them, but they're, they're, they're employed as a consultant to the board, just as I am. So yeah, absolutely. If you, if you want to make that request of them, they, they will absolutely be here. They probably don't have much to report on yet, but as, as momentum builds, they absolutely will.
Well, no, I don't want them to come unless they need to.
No, no, but they.
This is, I don't remember doing this before, so this is a new process for us.
Yeah. Yeah, no, they, they, especially during construction, they should absolutely be delivering monthly reports to the board. And, 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 and we'll, we'll do that in tandem as well. So absolutely.
The consent agenda, which we're going to prove here after a while. I want to clarify one of the things that Rob talked about there. The batting facility has an anonymous donor, and the boosters are making up the rest of the money. So I guess to say, John Hardin and Central Hardin, if y'all want, you may have to raise your own money because they have done that, and we're, we're approving those funds that they're going to raise to pay for that facility. So they've got some committed folks out there, and, and it's, that's really great that they're going to do that. And I think my comment four or five months ago was that, you know, we didn't want to do something for one school that we're not doing for another. And I was well corrected on that, and it is all donated. So if anybody wants to donate one of these new schools, we're kindly reluctant about putting a personal name on there. But we could put your name on the front of a school if you want to donate it. All right.
$25 million.
Sure.
Let me ask one more question. Will we have a groundbreaking, a formal groundbreaking at both these sites?
Yes, ma'am, we would, yes.
Good deal. That's fine.
All right, we're down to the consideration of the consent agenda now. And so we're open for any comments or anything on it. I've already gotten into a little bit of it there, but I wanted to follow up with Rob's report to make sure that everyone was knew where we were at on that project. Any questions?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Have a second, all right. It was, our consent agenda was fairly small this time. We're approving a trip or two here for some students to travel. One of them, I think, was New York, and I think KD wanted to be a chaperone on that.
Yeah, I think I want to go on this trip. I think I could round up $900, maybe.
We're approving HCECTV contract with Brandonberg Telecom for live sports coverage. And that's, that's fairly nice to be able to have the live sports coverage. We got a young student back there from Central Hardin that's working tonight to, so he can do a lot of that broadcasting for us. Yeah, glad to have him here. And we've got the orders of the treasurer, monthly financial reports, certified personnel actions, and site-based decision minutes. Are there any questions? Are there any questions or clarifications?
Mr. Chairman, I could just make one quick comment. I noticed Ms. Quarter's here, I just wanted to say, her team at North has been wonderful to work with on this indoor hitting facility. It had great booster support, and it really worked hard to make this happen for their school, so-
Absolutely.
I really appreciate all her work and her team for what they were able to do.
Will they be able to use that facility as part of the PE program too? No.
Right now, the boosters that contributed to it, that's what we're working on right now, those baseball softball, and you can check on TC, but we may consider that in the future.
Okay.
Any other comments? If not, we'll vote. You got one?
Yeah, I just want to say that I got my brochure on the pack for their upcoming season, and boy, is that a tremendous job that Bard has done with it. There's a lot of great things coming this time.
Yes, they have the Christmas carol, I believe, that will have many personalities from the local community. You have a chance to look at that, it should be great fun.
Aren't they doing Mamma Mia?
And they are doing Mamma Mia as well.
With the Sony.
Yes. And the Christmas carols, and many others.
There's several other things on there too. Boy, it's just a jam-packed season, they've done, he's done a great job with that.
We'll vote on the consent agenda, all in favor, second, third, fourth, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And that takes us to number 10, action items. Don't have anything listed on the action items. New business. Anyone have any new business? No surprises?
No surprises.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman. First, want to welcome Chris Bauer, he is the new Chief Student Support Services, and Chief of Student Support Services, so we want to welcome him. I couldn't remember if you sat there last month or not.
I did not.
I didn't think so, so we just want to recognize him this evening. Also, we have four new principals in Harden County. We have Nikki Colom at Cecilia Valley Elementary, Kevin Estes at Vine Grove Elementary, Jacinta Pleasant at Radcliffe Elementary, and then James Luttrell at Vine Grove Elementary. So want to welcome them. They are putting in some very long hours, trying to do things the right way, and have been off to an excellent start, so congratulations to those. If you have a chance on the board agenda, if you will look under Certified and Classified Actions, you will see all the hard work that Mr. Bauer and his entire department have been doing. They have processed hundreds of people, they have gone out to find teachers and custodians and workers for our buildings, and have just done a fantastic job with that. Also, with Mr. Stiss's department, we have Chris Quarter here this evening. And our schools, I think Ms. Campbell would most certainly agree with this, along with Ms. Hurt back there, and Ms. Brandonberg, and our high school folks over here, each student received a postcard at Open House Night with their bus, and what time the bus would pick their student up, and what time they would drop them off, and that was something new. So Mr. Wells shared with me today what a short line they had with their students, and how successful that was. So just want to thank them. It was using technology that we have in the district to its fullest, and so we really appreciate that. I know people think we have the summers off, I assure you, we don't. It's a lot of hard work and dedication that happens over the summer to make these first days successful. So we just want to welcome all of our new employees, and thanks to everyone who has gotten us off to a fantastic start. Thank you all for that.
What was, what's our latest enrollment figure?
Our latest enrollment, we were up by 120 today, I think that takes us close to 15,000 students, so it has been fantastic. Just really wanting to share how much we appreciate the hard work from those folks.
Hundred and twenty?
We are 120 students up from what we were projected at the end of last year.
That is roughly four teachers, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Four classrooms.
Trying to find the exact numbers from Angie Sanders here.
Does that include preschool?
No, preschool, we want to welcome them, they will start on August 22nd, so.
So what are you doing now, Carlina?
She is a-
You have made this a circle.
About 650 preschoolers right now, ready to start.
Six fifty.
Oh my gosh, I'm excited.
Currently, I'm sorry, Kate, we are at 14,246 students, 14,246, and so we're up 124 compared to this date last year.
And then if you add preschool onto that, we are very close to 15,000.
Yes, yes. We will welcome preschoolers August 22nd, so.
How is our daycare doing?
The childcare center is doing fantastic. As a matter of fact, I received a very long email last night of appreciation from one of the faculty members, just saying that her kids, it makes her sort of sad that they jump out and run away from her, and they really, really enjoy going into the childcare, and said that she had actually walked in and, of course, buzzed in securely, but when she got to the room, the assistant was dancing with one of her kids, trying to keep the baby awake long enough so that she might have a little more peaceful ride, so. But the numbers are great, and the parents have just been thrilled with it.
That's wonderful, that's wonderful.
If you ever need relaxation, I'm not sure that's the place to get it, but if you want to go and hold a baby, there's babies to be held, so.
I spent an hour one time in a first-grade classroom, and it was like being nibbled to death by ducks. I quickly realized why my degree was high school and not middle one.
Yes, quickly figure out what seat on the bus you should be on, so, but anyway.
You give one child a hug, and you're not walking out.
Well, it was like it was Miss Sharon.
Miss Sharon. Yes, that has not changed.
Alright, thank you for your report. Executive session, we don't need executive session. Board calendar, August 29th, 5:30 Central Office, we will have that annual tax hearing. And August 30th at 5:00, here again, we'll have a special board meeting to hopefully decide where we're going.
I move the week turn.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Second, third, fourth, saying aye. Aye, opposed.
We're just having too much fun.
Motion carries.
The Harden County School Board Consent Agenda. A, Instructional Services. One, Approval of a Modified Schedule for Students with a Disability. Two, Receive the Annual Data Security Report. Three, Approval of the HCECTV Contract for Production Services with Brandonberg Telecom to Live Sports Coverage from July 1, 2018, June 30, 2019. B, Student Services. Approval for the James T. Alton Middle School 8th Grade Social Studies Students to Travel New York, New York from March 29th to April 2nd, 2019 via Commercial Carrier. C, Financial Services. One, Receive the Monthly Financial Reports. Two, Approval of the Orders of the Treasurer. Three, Receive the School Activity Fund Balance Report. Four, Approval of the LGNE-KU Rape Case Intervention Resolution from KSBA. Five, Approval for the Revised BG Donor Agreement and Construction Documents for North Harden High School Indoor Hitting Facility. Six, Approval of School Fundraisers. D, Human Resources. One, Certified Personnel Actions. Two, Classified Personnel Actions. E, Miscellaneous Items. Receive the Schools SBDM Minutes. Two, Receive the PAC Information. Three, Approval of the Minutes from the July 19, 2018 Special Board Meeting. Four, Approval of the Minutes from the July 19, 2018 Regular Evening Board Meeting. The Board Calendar. August 29th, 5:30 PM, Central Office Tax Hearing. Number Two, August 30th, 5:00 PM, Central Office Special Board Meeting.